The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer of 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, February 9th, 2023.
for which it stands, one nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have been indicating to Mr. Gray.
May the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, thank you for bringing us together for these serious deliberations and help us to remember those who are most in need that we serve and help those who are in need of shelter in these winter times. And please, Lord, take into your, in your mercy, all those who were victims of the Turkish and Syrian earthquakes this week. We ask your assistance when you, in your Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
I think he was correct. Come on, roll call.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Trask.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Here.
Councilwoman Hallworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Present.
City Clerk Lee.
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Craig Raff.
Here.
City Fire Chief Sork.
Here.
City Building Official Peterson.
Here.
And that's all.
Thank you for noticing that we do have votes.
Vote.
This is Judge Cottrell, I want to say again.
And Judge Cottrell.
Judge Cottrell, thank you, Judge. You all noticed that we do have the audio visual system on. I'm told that even everybody has their mics, make sure you're talking gratefully into the mic, so you can pick things up when you're back here. But it should modulate and do everything for everybody's sound, so hopefully, well, our first test run will go out, we've got someone from 40B here who's running. Excellent work. I'm very excited about it, so. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes. As reminded, this first public comment, the council is only hearing comments on items that are on the agenda, but if you have other items to discuss outside of those, please say those in the final public comment after the meeting.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
My name is Cynthia Davis, Cynthia Davis. On five and six, I'm curious, if you graph it, you need Shoshone Tribal this money, where, what budget are we going from, where is it coming from, the money?
Well, this is public comment, there's no response.
It's large.
But, but don't, don't, don't talk about that during the item, that's a, that's a item.
You don't ask?
He got me to get up here.
No, I didn't. Watch this.
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 6B3, providing the possible $300,000 donation to the Shoshone Tribe and complete its townhouse project, I support that, and I had requested that you put me on the next agenda for approval of the $300,000 grant to complete my Georgetown project on High Street, I want equal access to federal funding. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 75, you're to consider an acquittal to Shoshone Tribe's request for a $260,000 donation, I support that request, and I had requested that you put me on the next agenda, given today, for consideration of a $250,000 donation to compensate me for the lost revenue where I was not allowed to grant my properties and not being granted permits as others were allowed, the donation would allow me to complete my life center. I want equal consideration and access to federal funding. I remind you that I live in the city, and you failed to, and you failed to put that request in the, on the agenda. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 79, you're to consider a $25,000 grant to the Northern Railroad Foundation diesel consulting group to write a raised grant, this needs to be denied. The railroad needs to pay their own expenses, they do not operate under the federal meeting law, they spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' money, but they fail to show how it is spent, no one knows. They have a problem with Mr. Bassett being the manager and his wife being the bookkeeper. The rumor that tens of thousands have been embezzled has yet to be answered. Council Lawworth and Councilwoman Hartnett cannot properly and fairly represent the railroad and the city interests at the same time. For years, Councilwoman Lawworth has never collected a dime for, asked to track rail for missing.
Mr. Chachas, please keep your comments to the agenda item.
He should be ashamed of his sign of media, minions may have been watched, that argument's this.
Mr. Chachas, please keep your comments to the agenda item.
I am.
You are not.
Yes.
I will not argue with you on this, sir, please just keep your items, your comments to the item.
You regarded that particular.
You did not.
You did.
Please move on.
Sit him down, Mayor.
Is there any other public comment? Carrying, sitting now, we will move on to item 3, discussion for possible action approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. All entertain a motion on this? I'll move for approval.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, this is the proper time to ask, um, the, are we talking about new business or just what's?
The entire agenda. Is there an idea like to move?
I, well, they'll not move, but probably put together, because one runs into the other, so I don't have to.
I can get that under advisement, that won't be a problem.
So eight and nine, I think, run into each other.
So I have a motion for approval of the agenda, do I have a second?
All second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott, any further discussion? Carrying, sitting now, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Carrying, so ordered, I enforce the department reports, we'll start with the fire chief. Uh, no order report, but three questions, I think for the fire chief. Uh, police chief?
He has a minute.
Uh, do you support Judge, Judge Cottrell, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing mutual to report, and our submission goes effective immediately of the month, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney?
Nothing to report.
City clerk?
No report.
City treasurer?
No report.
City public works supervisor?
I was just gonna bring you up to date on the left station, because we were told that it started out real bad this morning, we were a pump quit working, and so we were like, we were supposed to have the pump company here this morning, so we had to cancel that, so we called the mine, the mine brought down some pump, and we got everything back going again, they'll be here tomorrow. The part, the parts for the pump showed up today, so hopefully next Wednesday, Wednesday, everything, back up and running. As far as the man that dozer, still have pumps, there's no insight, we'll be there.
Mike, is, is it just a pump we're after, is it because the dozer, old dozer?
Well, we got it, they had the motor rebuilt and the transmission rebuilt, but they can't get my, wheel machinery's website or whatever, you know, the parts, actually it's definitely shown no more, but they said, don't worry, they'll put something together to make it work, but they just don't know that.
Okay, thanks.
And it is because of the age, I guess, too.
Okay. State water operator reports, city engineer is not here tonight either, city building official.
Good evening, I just wanted to report a couple of things, contacted about our plus energy this week, they've submitted their final application to FERC for the pump storage power project, so we'll continue to monitor that and how that goes. The county is budgeted for a new vehicle, so we're finally getting rid of the death wobbles machine, which is a plus, don't have to drive around the county, get 18 miles an hour anymore, irritating all the 18-wheelers. Beans and Brew is moving along pretty well, been contacted by another development firm who's looking at doing another convenience store slash RV park on the other side of the holiday area there, so look forward to a little bit more development, and that's pretty much all I have to report.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, number five, the NROY Foundation report. Will disclose, I am a part-time employee of the foundation, this is my action item, I don't work in the lab.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been an interesting couple of weeks since the beginning of the year with all the snow, and maybe I'm not there and, and operating in it. Log Marv 81 is in service, 93 has been on service for repairs to her valve chests, we have one valve chest done and one more to go, and she'll be back in service too. Log Marv 81, or 801, we actually blue carded her, and a blue card would be like license and registration on your automobile, which means that you can now operate outside of the yard, so first time in 40 years, so we're really excited, and we used her at Blackpool's photo shoot, too. January, we did the, the, the Fireworks Express, and, and that went very, very well, a shout out to our fireworks people, it was a great show, and we actually carried 137 passengers that weekend. The real big news down at the railroad is on January 10th, Dirk passed away, and Dirk is our shop cat, and we did not have any idea how he was followed around the internet. And just to give you an idea, in the last 28 days, we've reached over 5 million people. And, and the post engagement is over a million, and, and we, we jumped 10,000 on the number of people who follow our page, it's now went to 177,000. Because of the popularity of Dirk, we are actually celebrating Dirk's Memorial Day on May 28th, the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, we have commissioned a tombstone and also two bronze statues, one statue will be on top of his tombstone, which is right next to the depot, and the other statue will be down in the machine shop where he spent his life. And Dirk is evolving, sort of, you're all very familiar with Smokey the Bear, and we're gonna have Dirk the shop cat, so, and to represent the railroad and everything else. We saw this day was coming a few years ago, and so we did get another rescue kitten who we named Dirk Junior or DJ for short, and he is filling a big pause, and took a picture of him and posted it on our Facebook page, and it's at like 1.5 million views, so it's, you know, would you run trains to just, and always interest, so. Does anyone have any questions?
Maybe, Mark, you might consider copyrighting cat, may have on a cat food or something.
We, we, we already have. Yep, yeah, Dirk the shop cat, so, and, and his likeness, too, and it is just, it is, I mean, the news stories, he was, well, he was featured in the Times, I mean, it's the.
As in China.
As in China, correct. He was featured in newspapers in Europe, China, the Philippines, all across the United States, there were news stories, and press pieces on him, and the whole bit, it's just, it's really incredible, so, so we're going to keep doing that, and, and his statue will become, you know, people will, will visit just to write his numbers on his statue, so it's, it's kind of crazy, so, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item 6, your reports, city council, we'll start with Councilman Trask.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Carson.
No report.
Councilwoman Al, Councilwoman Al, here.
Um, I went to Reno last weekend, did attended a training for newly elected officials, and that was super helpful and beneficial, and then attended an eclipse meeting for that happening on October 14th, that's about it.
Councilman Al.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm giving the State of the Street Department major of 2023, 2223, uh, report on that, hopefully it'll be more enlightened than what the president did the other night. As the lay-in on for the city view street department, I am providing this report to inform not only the council and mayor, but also the citizens of our fine city efforts being put forth to maintain and improve the 52 miles of streets in the city view. I get a detail of the revenue in there, total revenue is 1.8 million bucks, so, so everybody understands, take note that the public transit contributions, which are budgeted for $605,000, cannot be used for labor expenses currently and in the past, the RTC revenue is being used to fund special streets projects, material, contractors, engineer, et cetera. As of this, as of this date, no city employee wages have been expensed from the RTC revenue. Robinson Mine revenue, which is 20, 22, excuse me, $20,000, is to help maintain storms, to help maintain storm drains where the groundwater from the Robinson Mine flow through. The county contribution is just that many, in the amount of $22,540, which is the yearly thing, is contributed by the White Pine County Road Department. The street department has three employees with a budget of labor costs in the amount of $276,634. Simple math will prove the gasoline tax alone will not cover the cost to these three employees. The shortfall in gasoline tax, which is $168,596, and the labor cost of $276,634 is budgeted to be a loss, not a loss, a variance, thank you, of $108,038. My projections, which I detailed out in a spreadsheet, my projections are the shortfall will increase before year end, I'm predicting by just using budget numbers from February onward, that loss of shortfall will be about $138,000. The street department for the first five months beginning July 22, performed their duties as outlined in their budget. November started the winter season with the first snowstorm besides hitting the city on election day, given the crew tended to mirrorize themselves in the streets with plow and, however, Mother Nature was getting ready to test their grit and determination by lining up a series of atmospheric rivers to get our area with snow, rain followed by freezing temperatures along with more snow, followed by a short warming trend with additional rain with more freezing temperatures. The three-man crew performed outstanding, proving to Mother Nature that working long hours, being called out to work, and being away from the families, they can handle what some dishes out, in order to keep the streets open for emergency service, home deliveries of online orders, postal service, trash pickup, and the delivery of home heating fuels along with the streets planned for the citizens. Mother Nature blasted us again on New Year's Eve with a snowstorm that hasn't been seen in our area probably for a decade. Deep snow along with gomemans causing major drifts, a battle was set for our road trip, and they took the battle on, giving up holidays and working long hours once again. As the city, the city clerk reported, it's time to call all hands on deck to join the effort. Unfortunately, 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 we'd only get two additional employees with CDL licenses to join in. As most people witnessed, the effort was, the effort was worked in plan, calling snow from the streets, that Mother Nature did it again and again, more wind and winds causing drifts around the city. A swarm of citizens helped attack the problem with their snow, with their plow handled ATVs, clearing streets, sidewalks, and driveways for the folks who were snowed in. This group, this group was invaluable to the citizens after the snowpiles passed, to help clear block driveways, et cetera. Alley use was almost completely shut down, will have to be addressed later. The crews quickly around, quickly around areas developed snow for disposal, city hall and public work supervisors started receiving complaints about snow being dumped on empty private property lots, resulting with the crews having to dump all the loaded snow outside the city to dump on areas and not approved for us to use. As usual, no matter time, there will always be folks that deem it okay to push snow from private properties back into the street that was once cleared with snow, causing hazards and extra work. In one incident, the individual was confirmed about this practice by the public work supervisor, the things got heated. The situation was deused, but it should never have gotten out of hand. This is a violation of the city municipal code to push snow onto city streets. Mother Nature will have the last day after the snow is cleared and warmer weather arrives, and we'll have plenty of puddles to deal with. Back to the shortfall of gasoline tax versus labor costs, White Pine Canyon pursued and were able to have a state collect agreement to the county, five cents on every gallon diesel fuel sold in the county and city. For fiscal years 2020, 21, 21, and 22, there's been an average of $375,000 per year collected from the diesel field tax. The current fiscal year is also expected to receive 375,000. This revenue is being recorded in the RTC budget, which will be used by both county road department and city road department. This field tax, like all field taxes, like all gasoline taxes, can be used for labor expenses as well as contracts for RTC projects. The unordered diesel fuel fund balance as of January 31st, 2023, is $1,512,124, with additional revenue forthcoming. I, I will make a note, the city treasurer will meet with the county finance director to talk about an issue of the RTC funding, that will be tomorrow at 10 o'clock. As in the past years, the general fund has transferred funds into the roads, but we keep officially responsible. As you can see in the other spreadsheet I, I, I put together there, the amount being transferred is increasing yearly, and I'm projecting this transfer to exceed the budget amount of $8,000, my estimate is closer to $240,000. This being based on the snowstorm labor expense, the use of last of diesel fuel is up, it's also needed to be properly backed charged to the street department, what, what are the true costs to manage the street department? In my opinion, it is not property, it's enterprise land to subsidize the operations of other departments. Diesel fuel, fuel is sold in the city view, city view, McGill, and the Bay Area, where are the most gallons pumped, right here in the city view, the fuel islands. Where are the other, are there other ways to fund support the street department other than transfers from the general fund, which takes away from the operation of the city? Question is, can the city secure additional financial assistance to cover the shortfall between the gasoline tax and labor costs by using the five cents diesel fuel tax? This year's current snow, snowing expense was not budgeted, and therefore be possibly, and therefore be possibly to have this unbudgeted expense received official funding. The funding request, though not being reimbursable, until fiscal year end, to ensure more agricultural amount, hopefully, it will be carried on. So just a quick one on the, the different field tax revenue versus wages and benefits, the fiscal year that included on 2019, excuse me, 2018 or 2019, you can just throw them away, at that time, in my opinion, the financial condition of the city was the worst it's ever been. When the, myself and some of the important other staff people left, with a budget balance of around $800,000, it got down to barely over $200,000. A new regime came in, and it went the other way, but we still had, back in the fiscal year 18, the city had to fund, the shortfall, I should say, is $50,000 between wages and gas tax. In 2019, it was up to $73,000. Started coming down with a change in management to $42,858 difference, in 2021 year ending it was $47,367, and fiscal year, we just went through the shortfall of $52,800, and they go through and they make the transfers, but a lot of times the transfer's not gonna do it, and the big, when you overlook, when you look at the overtime wages spreadsheet, you can see right when the storms started, you know, but, labor, labor's expense, you know, budgeted about $14,800. Here comes November, $14,96, December, $22,000 in regular wages, you know, perhaps $8,000 more, your benefits went up because wages go up, overtime, $759, around the budget amount, then hit January, wages, $15,000, benefits went way up, $8,000 on the budget, and your overtime is just under $10,000, $8,87, $887. So that impact, we just need to come up with a way, so we can, when I say way, the city management team, come up with a way, try to relieve, they have to take money from the general fund every year to subsidize the, the street fund. It, it's just not working, and there's a lot of money that's, that's spent over the years, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that's been transferred, I, I just think there's a way, we need to talk, we need to go outside the box and think of a different way to work this over. Don't be stuck in a paradigm of, that was the way we do it, the way we do it, we don't want to rock the boat. We have to rock the boat because our citizens deserve better, we need to do accountability and just not go and make the fall so. Any questions on that, from the council? State of the Street Department, I would say they're a bunch of great guys, three of them, and two people from the water department, they had to earn me of the pickups with plows out, cleaning things, too, you know. Two days ago, I did take a little trip over to McGill, our streets are many times better. They started cleaning them yesterday, I believe, but our crew for 50, 52 miles, they've done an outstanding job, you know, you know, away from their family during the holidays, taking like Mother Nature dumps on us during the holidays, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams Harper?
If you could, if I could just make one comment, a couple of months ago, maybe almost three months ago, I'm part of the career technical education program, and Jim, it struck me, it's something that we'd like to do, and I think there's even a better reason to be a little more urgent about it, is we want our students to have the latest and the greatest in B, and learn how to use some of that new equipment that is out there, and when, one of the things that we have been talking about is trying to figure out some way, and I'm gonna come to you guys, and probably in the spring, with some sort of plan, but we have kids who want to learn, when you said you couldn't find people in CDLs, but when we went to the marketplace to see what was out there, I'm hoping that the school district can start turning out some kids who are ready to do that, because I hope at some time, we're gonna find some money to buy some of the equipment that they can learn to use right there in the schools, that our folks can learn to use, and maybe our folks can begin to help teach in the schools, so, because we have lots of kids who want to stay right here to work on heavy equipment and so forth, so, it would be a matter of a school district, just like we do, we try to go out and find money to fund and buy some of these simulated equipment pieces that could make our own kids ready to, to do things, especially, you know, we said we can't find people during holidays, but we have kids that want to do this kind of stuff, so, thank you for presenting that. Just shows the, the urgency we need to, to try to get with as a school district also. The other thing is, as, as far as my reports, last week I attended a meeting as part of being with the railroad commission, working out some issues and other things with the city, and there's, excuse me, with the state, and those things aren't settled yet, but it really works.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I have anything additional to report. We'll move on to item 7, items for discussion, possible action only, if the Ulysses Council give a consent agenda, give the minutes from January 12th to January 26th, and then bills from January 24th, January 27th, and February 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to disclose, I'm a member of the Ulyvolunteer Fire Department, and there are some deals or repeated benefits for the fire department, and I feel like you wrote on these deals in the press interview.
Thank you. I'll also disclose, my husband's a member of the Ulyvolunteer Fire Department, I don't treat it any differently than any of the other numbers, and, again, I'm a lot of these items as well. I'll, if they have a motion for questions or corrections?
So.
Motion for Councilman Al to approve the bills and the minutes, do I have a second?
All second.
Second, Councilman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Carrying, so ordered, we'll move on to Uly business, item 1, Mayor Robertson, DLM representative, discussion only, presentation regarding the Bureau of Land Management starting a new regulation for the land plan, I believe we have some representatives for this tonight. Question for possible action, approval to host the Valley of Cities and Municipalities Retreats, retreat in June 2023, exact dates to be determined, my understanding is this is kind of the leak plan for the third week in June, this will be the third such retreat the leak has hosted, they've hosted one in Fountain, they've hosted one in Elko, and we'd be the third, and this is, this is separate from the uh, their conference in August, so this is a smaller, just a couple days, we're gonna bring some presentations and workshops.